I'd like to call the February 21st, 2023 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to read the Ethics Reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract that's coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commissioners at our meeting this evening. I would like to make one announcement. If you are attending this meeting of the commission and parked in the county's parking garage, or use public transit to attend the meeting, you can get validation for your parking or transit pass from one of the officers who's with us this evening. You can see them on the way out. We come to the Consent Agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to Public Comment, and we have a sign-in sheet. Seven folks have signed up, and so we'll go through that list in order. If there's anybody else who would like to address the Board during Public Comment who didn't sign up, there'll be an opportunity to do that once we get through the folks who signed up. So each person has three minutes to address the Board. You'll get an orange light when you have about 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you discontinue your public comments once your time's up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. And the first person that signed up is Andrew Clark.
Hello, I'm Andrew Clark, Legislative Director for Beddingfield-Schidle, Chapter 14, Disabled American Veterans. I'm here to offer some words for informed thought, beginning with McCormick Field, for it is more than just a place for a game, but a century-old platform for American celebration and opportunity to broadcast community awareness. The game is an expression of American science through talented American athletes. When today 95% of American youth are unable to meet basic military fitness standard, $40 million sounds like a small investment. For a place of community gathering, celebrating the great American way of life, thanks to veterans like Charles George, for whom the VA is named in honor of, a facility that brings $400 million a year, in addition to the 18,000 veterans bringing additional $200 million in compensation, for every one federal dollar, $1.71 goes into the local economy, and with that, I say you're welcome. But there was a far greater price paid, such as service number 0-337405, killed in action fighting the Germans. Pilot and crew sustained heavy gunfire while on a bombing mission. B-17 pilot Lieutenant Newman giving the ultimate sacrifice, dying for us, so that we may live the American dream. There was a price paid. Al Whitesides answered the nation's call to stop the spread of communism, fighting in the jungles of Vietnam. Welcome home. The price was paid and a promise was made. I encourage this newly-elected Board to uphold the promises made to those who carry the burdens of afflicting America's freedom. Pass a resolution today supporting the expansion of tax exemptions for veterans. Pass a resolution today supporting the tax exemption for emergency responders. Send a check today to the Charles George VA Medical Center to cover programs not funded federally. The DAV, American Legion of VFW, have been a means of support for America's heroes for over 100 years. Will continue to do so for many generations. Disabled American veterans dedicated to a single purpose: empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respecting dignity. We can be reached at dav14.org or by calling 828-367-0037. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, the next person that signed up is Scott Coleman.
Good evening. I would like to talk this evening about transparency, or the lack thereof, with the Buncombe County Planning Department. During the past 13 months, 13 months, I have personally emailed the department 21 times. Seventeen of those were returned, answered within the same day, up to three days later. I am thankful for that. That was awesome. That was until January 24, when something has stopped, or something has changed. On the 24th of January, I was told that I would no longer be allowed to email anyone in the Planning Department, but that other citizens would be able to. Thought that was a little odd. So the option that I had was to file a public record request for my questions, which I have done. There are other people in the community that have emailed following that directive, but have not returned, had returned emails with correspondence. My question is, where do we stand in the process of the major subdivision in Penner's Cove? I have no idea. The, I have emailed, I don't get a response. Other people have emailed, don't get a response. The public portal is not being updated. I filed a public record request and have not reached, have an answer provided. So I just wonder, why, why has the process been changed, and why is it not public anymore? So, these are my questions tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Chloette Coleman. Thank you.
My name is Chloette Coleman, and I'm a resident on Penner's Cove Road. I ask this Board to please take up the Penner's Cove question and review the issues. There is something very wrong with what is being proposed for our community, and we need help from our elected representatives. One year ago, the Buncombe County Planning Board met to make their recommendation to the question of rezoning a piece of property on Penner's Cove Road, from residential low-density to R2. At least 150 Penner's Cove residents were involved in that meeting. The planning Board members listened to community concerns, and each Board member shared their own research and observations, and it was an impressive amount of information. The planning Board voted 7 to 1 not to recommend a change from low-density zoning to R2. These Board members overwhelmingly agreed that an R2 level of development in Penner's Cove would be destructive, and that recommendation of no is what the Board of County Commissioners was to receive for your review. An interesting side note is that the plat that had been submitted on the developer's application at that time showed 281 residences were being considered for development on Penner's Cove, a number which would double the number of residences on Penner's Cove, and that's, that's just data. But of course, that was not part of the planning Board's consideration, but isn't it an interesting point of data that 281 units were being proposed, and it was voiced repeatedly as a number that was too dense for the rural community of Penner's Cove? The current plan is proposing just short of that, at 266. Even more, where that, where that's what we think the number is at this point, we, we do need to see an updated application. Even more perplexing to me is that, following the planning Board meeting and vote, the Buncombe County Planning and Development Department went to work on a plan to help the developer, and I know that's part of their job, but in this case, the optics of doing this so soon after such a public outcry and a planning Board recommendation of no, the optics just are not positive on that. But they went to work on a plan that helped the developer to circumvent the planning Board recommendation, circumvent a potential review by you, the county commission, and circumvent the will of the people in Penner's Cove community. In a blatant slap in the face to our community, a plan was filed for the current development as a major subdivision, which is to take all public input out of the process. This appears to enable the Planning Department to have all control and decision-making. In addition, the developer was advised to use a conservation hilltop easement to bump the density higher for the development being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Dee Stiles.
For three-quarters of a century, I have lived by the same creek. When the steep slope upstream from my house began to be developed, the creek regularly ran very muddy and was never free of a burden of silt. But as more houses have been built, another, more worrying problem is showing up. Each time it rains, the creek comes up more than it used to, and during dry times, the creek runs lower than it used to. As more of the mountainside is covered with paved roads, driveways, and rooftops, the less water the mountain can soak up. The creek has continued to drop down during dry times. Last year, the level got so low, it was hard for me to get water to water my garden. And across the valley, my friend who raises vegetables to sell couldn't get water from the creek near his garden that is downstream from steep slope development behind Grovemont. As more and more people move here, we are going to need more water, not less. I do understand that Asheville controls the tap water system in Buncombe County, but a lot of the mountainsides that fill the creeks and streams are under the jurisdiction of the county, and most of the farmers using surface water for their crops are in the county. And when Asheville needs to get more water, that water will come from the county. Now, our reservoir is full, but as the climate changes, and storms and droughts become worse, and more people move here, how long will that last? How long until we need to get more water from the Swananoa and French Broad Rivers? And when that time comes, will the mountain creeks be able to keep the rivers full? As weeks go by, more roads and houses are covering the mountains with impervious surfaces, things that will be hard to take back in 20, or 30, or 50 years, when we may be short of water. Who is going to figure out how much permeable surface we can lose before it is too much? How much extra water can we lose down the river during wet weather before we don't have enough in dry times in the future? We need to keep development off our steep mountainsides. If we don't act now, how will future generations fix what we did not have the courage to do when we had the chance? The time for half-measures and talk is over. Have the courage to do what the generations that come after you need you to do now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gary Thompson.
Thank you. Some time ago, the zoning was established for the Penner's Cove area, and about a year ago, it was reaffirmed that the zoning was good, when the Planning Commission rejected the idea of rezoning the area. That atmosphere that, of the area, is what draws people. The mountain scenery, the rivers, the creeks, the waterfalls, the forests, the wildlife, all of that is what draws people here. But yet, this project will destroy much of that environment. Just a list, a bullet list of the things that it will affect, look at the existing conditions to start with. The road qualities, the local road quality, they're horrible. They're blind, they're narrow, they don't take the traffic now. The approach roads, Sweeten Creek Road and Hendersonville Road, loaded now. Sweeten Creek, we gonna widen it? Well, the latest news is that they're gonna start widening in four years. Take about 10 years to finish. So, so much for that. The drainage, it's just been covered, is, the area can't handle the drainage now. Robinson Creek will flood, the bridge near a school road will wash out eventually. What if the sewage pipeline fails that goes up over the mountain ridge, as proposed? That will destroy the environment. So again, this project will destroy the local roads. The approach roads will be totally overloaded. Heavy rainfall will flood the area and wash out the roads. The school road bridge will likely fail, and it will destroy the environment, especially if that sewage pipeline fails, which, like I mentioned last time, Murphy lives. The idea of allowing this is just kind of escapes me. The environment is what draws people here. Why allow a regulation that doesn't make a lot of sense, the conservation environment? Why allow that to overrule the zoning, when that result will be to destroy the environment that draws everybody to this area?
All right, thank you. Next is Sam Chesting.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is my first time. It's a very nice room, nice woodwork. Thanks so much for having me. I appreciate it. I just want to say thank you so much for your service and your time to the community. It means a lot to us. I am here as well to just represent another face to another demographic of the community of Penner's Cove. I know there are a lot of other young families and people with kids and jobs that couldn't get out, work really like I did, to come. And I just wanted to show my face and just to ask for your continued support. It's a, it just means a lot to us. There's a deep understanding of the need for responsible development in our community and for additional housing. We don't, we really understand that. I just asked the Board would help us to see that done responsibly. I believe that there is a way to have that done responsibly within our community. The Planning Board clearly spoke for many reasons on why it could not be done responsibly, by voting it down 7 to 1, as was spoken too. And personally, I just felt pretty discouraged when I saw that it was the planning team of the county that were the ones to suggest this loophole of the easements, to go ahead and skip around and push this thing forward regardless. And I know that the role of government is to be by the people, for the people, to protect and serve, and that is what I'm hoping for today. There is still an opportunity for the local government to help support this community in protecting against this issue. And one other thing I'd like to just ask or bring some transparency to is that, in the 2043 plan, there isn't a way that I could tell by doing the survey to actually zoom in and see where some of these lines are with roads and stuff. You can go to a library, you can go to some of these places and see the map print out, but I feel like that also leads to a lack of transparency for people maybe saying, yes, they want something, but not knowing exactly where and what areas that would affect to do so. And we just ask for some greater transparency there. And that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Sam. And the last person that signed up is Stephanie Thompson.
And, excuse me, in March of last year, we had a Zoom meeting with a very big turnout. There were 150 IP addresses listed, and multiple people were in attendance and were having Zoom parties. So there were a lot more people than even the IP addresses. Unfortunately, people can't get here to, because, for various reasons, they may be still at work, older, or just not able to get to these meetings in person. But nevertheless, there's many people in the whole Cove that are against this proposal, and we've continued to send emails to you, and people that can show up have shown up. And this is a year later. We're still having to send emails and show up, and it's all because of, well, it was 7 to 1 in our favor, the zoning commission already voted, and yet, because of a nonsensical loophole, this can result in probable disaster for most of us. In many ways, recently, a lot of us were without water, and I think there were one or two of you that went through that experience, which was miserable, and it lasted too long. And I'm just appealing to you, to, to your humanity and to your sense of empathy for others, if you lived in our area, in that Cove that we're in, or if you had family in there. I think it would mean more to you, because you would realize, you wouldn't want your family to go through what we're already going through, just with the narrow roads, the blind curves, the crumbling roads, the, I almost got in a bad accident coming out of my driveway a couple days ago, because we have a mirror up, but people speed around the curves. Well, if there were 500 and more, 500 more cars added because of that development, it'll be disastrous for, for us. And the sewage being pumped over the mountain and lack of water, again, would be disastrous, and it would be too late to remedy it. So now's the time where we, we appeal to you to please consider all these negative effects that it will have on us, and think about us and our needs, and, and have some empathy for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the Board? Yes, ma'am.
I, thank you. My name is Allison Suri, and I also live on Penner's Cove Road. I want to finish up what Chloette was trying to say earlier about the frustration that we've had with the, the consideration of a conservation easement on that hill in order to bump the number of houses that the developer could put on the lower portion of the property. The rule has never been used before, is what we learned at the Town Hall meeting, and that, per Nathan Pennington himself, and that it was proposed in a way to get around zoning, rather than as, as a part of a cohesive plan to do this additional building in a, in a responsible way. We, as has been said in so many different ways, we understand growth happens, we understand growth needs to happen, but the beauty and the natural environment of Asheville is what makes Asheville so special. And if we start building and, and creating suburban, I can't even think of the words, suburban sprawl, that's the word, and, and it's so crowded, and it looks like when you go to Denver, and it's cookie cutter house, cookie cutter house, there's no yards, there's no green. Denver's not even a pretty place anymore, because they've just let things grow faster than they should have. If we're going to plan, and this comprehensive plan that has been worked on so hard by so many, it sounds like we all want the same thing in the future, but first, let us get these things done now that we've, we've made promises to, or allowances for, or whatever. I'm speaking off the top of my head, which is not my strength, and I'm just emphasizing the, the damage that, the traffic and the rain and the runoff, and like they've all said, we've lost so many feet of, of our yard, a good 15 feet of our yard, and so that the creek is that much closer to our house than it was in 1997 when we moved in. And that's just with the slow growth that has occurred over the last 30 years. It's, it's been really disappointing to see that these basic things aren't, aren't visible. So my question would be, can we send you pictures of the damage that has happened in our yards? Is that something we're allowed to do? I've not had to do this before. I mean, can we send you our own little mini reports of what's happening in the county?
You can email the Commissioners if you want.
We can email those. All right. Well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the community want to address the Board during Public Comment? All right. Well, thank you all who took time to come out this evening. You know, we don't normally kind of get in a, you know, question and answer kind of format in the Commissioners' meeting, but I just, I guess I just wanted to take a moment of privilege, just like, for the folks from Penner's, who are concerned about the Penner's Cove development, because folks have been coming to a lot of the meetings and addressing the Board about this. And I'd be happy to talk with any of you, you know, kind of outside the meeting too, but I just wanted to share that, and just speaking from my own perspective. You know, this is a project that, you know, I'm not endorsing it, I'm not saying your concerns aren't resonant, but it's not a project that the Board of Commissioners is gonna, is gonna come before us. We're not gonna endorse the project, but nor are we gonna, are, nor are we in a position to reject it. Just, you know, different types of projects go through different procedures as outlined in the county's ordinances, and this is one that, based on that process, just, it does not come to the Board of Commissioners. So I just wanted to share that, because I've, you know, a lot of folks have spent a lot of time coming here, and so I just wanted to share with you my understanding of the process on that. And I don't want to get into Q and A about it. I'd be happy to talk, you know, outside of a meeting, but I just wanted to share that, because that's my understanding of the, of the process. So, thank you. All right. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda, it's under Good News, and it's recognition of Academy, the Academy Court and National Center for DUI Courts. And Tiffany is here to help us out with this one. Thanks for being here, Tiffany.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, and good evening. I would like to introduce the team to come up, and we can acknowledge their excellent work, yes, all of you that are here, from Buncombe County Sobriety Court. I'm excited and proud to announce that they have been selected as an Academy of Court by the National Center of DUI Courts. The Academy Court is a network that goes out and looks at the courts across the nation to identify those that are following best practices, that are using the tools and resources to reduce recidivism when it comes to DWIs in a more treatment and therapeutic-oriented way. And this is a culmination of nine years of work to develop the policies and procedures that adhere to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Best Practice Standards for Treatment Court. This year, this award has accumulated in trainings, implementing changes from, and learning from past participants in the program. They also came and did a site visit and saw how we did the work, and I want to acknowledge the Presiding Judge over our Sobriety Court, which is Judge Julie Kepel, and the Treatment Court Supervisor, who before she stepped in this role, was actually the Coordinator of the DUI Court, Gillian Davis, and our Diversion Services Manager, Josh Pierce. There is a whole team behind this group that are here before me, and I just want to acknowledge the hard, hard work and let you all know the exciting news.
All right. Great job. Congratulations. Thanks, Tiffany, and congratulations to all of you for your great work. Okay, under, we come to Presentations, and we have a presentation on the Financial Quarterly Report for FY23, Second Quarter, and Mason Scott. And Mason Scott, our interim finance director, is here to present this item. Hi, Mason.
Good evening. So we are discussing the second quarter financial report. So I wanted to start with some reminders and disclaimers. We are talking second quarter, so the information presented to you today and in the information packet is as of December 31st. So we are stepping back in time a little bit. As a general marker or guideline, at halfway through the year, we do expect revenues and expenditures to be at about fifty percent of our budget. But that is just a point of reference. And also want to say that the numbers are unaudited. So that means that they can be subject to change, but we don't expect any material changes to the discussion that we're having today. For the quarterly report, we present to you the general fund, which represents our primary governmental operations activity, the solid waste fund, which is our business type activity for the county, and then our investments activity, which is cash management. There is more information on additional funds in the packet that's attached to this item in the agenda. Want to begin first with the general fund revenue. So you see in the upper right, we are at fifty-six point seven percent collected of the budget. So tracking ahead of that fifty percent mark, that is roughly two hundred and thirty-one million collected of the total four hundred and seven million dollar budget. If you look at the chart, starting from the left are the major three drivers of our general fund revenue. So the property taxes, the sales tax distribution from the state, and the intergovernmental revenues. The property tax, I think, is our most significant change from the first quarter discussion that you all had, which is to be expected. So we increased from thirteen percent collections in the first quarter up to about seventy-five percent collections in this quarter. And we generally expect that because bills go out around the end of September. The first quarter, major collections occur in November and December, and then that tax due date is early in January. So we expect that major increase. Compared to last year, we are ahead of collections about one and a half percent. That re- that represents about eight and a half million ahead of where we were in December 2021. Next up, we have the sales tax. So we are, receive our sales tax on a three-month lag from the state. So we are in our second quarter, but the numbers you see there represent first quarter distributions from the state. We are also ahead of last year there by about twelve percent or one point two million. And then finally, the third grouping towards the middle of this slide is intergovernmental revenue. So this is basically flat to last year. This number represents a mixture of restricted and restricted state and federal funding to offset certain program expenditures. A good example here, and the bulk of this activity is HHS program revenue from the state. So these, these revenues are generally expected to align with the program expenditures that they support as far as timing goes. Next, we will look at, excuse me, the general fund expenditures by functions. So functions representing the groupings of our governmental activities. Top right of the slide, we are at forty-seven point one percent of budget. So tracking slightly behind in expenditures where we were tracking slightly ahead with revenues, but still fairly close to that fifty percent expected mark for the year. So that's about a hundred and ninety-two million dollars spent of the four hundred and seven million dollar total budget. Across all functions, we are ahead of the same time last year by about eleven and a half percent or just under twenty million dollars more in spending at this point in the year. An additional note I wanted to make here before I moved on is as of December 31st, we had thirty and a half million dollars in obligated funds across all functions that were pending payment. So this represents open contracts that might be paid on a monthly or quarterly basis that we haven't paid yet at that time of the year and might represent some supplies and capital equipment that's pending delivery. So staff are aware of some discussions and concerns in the community about a potential budget surplus for this year. And so just wanted to reset perspective that this is just a snapshot in time and we have another half of the year to work through. Next up, wanted to talk about general fund expenditures by category. So this is the same forty-seven point one percent spend at this point in the year, just organized by specific types of spend. Of our top two categories of spend, so the tallest blue bars are the, the budgets for salaries and program support. We are at forty-eight and a half percent and fifty point eight percent spend respectively. We're also ahead of the same time prior year by eleven percent over salaries from last year and seven percent more spend over program support. And I think this speaks to, we've added several new positions across the county, but we've also kept those positions in their capacity full over that time. Next, we move to our business type activity, the solid waste fund. This is the county's business type activity, so our general expectation here is that the revenues would support the related expenditures. You'll see in the top right corner there that we are at nearly thirty-five percent of our revenue collected at this point in the year. So that's about five and a half million earned of the sixteen million that we expect to earn in that fund this year. Primary drivers, of course, in this fund are residential and commercial waste collection. And when you focus on just the far left, that big blue bar, sales and services are at forty-seven or forty-eight percent of the budget. So we are riding very close to that fifty percent mark. We are slightly behind the same time last year by about a half a percent, which is about five hundred thousand dollars or so. Looking at the matching expenditures in the solid waste fund, we are at thirty-one percent of budget. We are tracking behind that fifty percent expectation, but this about a third of spend roughly aligned with about a third of the revenue collected in that fund. Both the salary and the operating spend are slightly ahead of this reporting period last year by about a hundred thousand dollars. And then wanted to close out this presentation with some time spent on investments. This is information that has been included in the informational packet attached to the item before, but I think this is the first time it's actually been presented to you. So wanted to give you a little bit of background. General statutes provide some very specific guidance on how to invest cash. It emphasizes liquidity, short-term investments, less than five years, and maintaining the value of each dollar. The main vehicles for investment at Buncombe County right now are the state-sponsored investment pool. There is a inter-local investment pool that this board entered to, entered into in the last couple of years, commercial paper and treasury notes. So prior to 2020, before you all allowed us to join the inter-local investment pool, we relied mainly on the state sponsored investment pool, which is a money market account for all intents and purposes. In 2020, you all entered the inter-local agreement to found and join the NCIP. And we also engaged with a dedicated investment advisor. So the major groupings that you'll see in this chart is we have roughly eighty percent of our cash in NCCMT, which is the state-sponsored investment pool, and the NCIP, which is our inter-local investment pool. And then the bulk of the remaining twenty percent is managed by our investment advisor with investments and commercial paper and treasury notes. And there's more information on all this in the packet attached to this item. Any questions for me?
I have one question. So with higher interest rates, if they remain higher, would that over time result in better returns for the county on the funds that we have on hand?
Yeah, so we, excuse, we have seen some of that. We actually have seen some pretty significant earnings above what we projected or budgeted in the last year. But I think it's, investments are generally unpredictable and there's a lot of conversation about interest rates going a different direction later in this year. But yes, we have realized some returns and those are allocated to the funds that own that cash.
Okay. And I hope they do go down. I'm just wondering if this is like the one positive thing that comes of it for us.
Yes, it's happened.
All right. Great. Other questions?
Well, with that, just, I am curious, and, and you can follow up later, because those investment returns do look better than they've typically been, I think. But I noticed the solid waste one, actually, I think it was in the negative with the investments. And so is, I didn't know if that was something...
I can look into that. Some of that will have to be, have to do with the timing of the specific investment. So generally, we are making fixed income investments, so we have to give up some of our cash to hold. And then fair market versus current cash valuations, but I can look into those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. All right. We don't have any public hearings. Avril, do you have anything on the county manager's report?
Just two quick items, sir. I, I am excited today that we can introduce some new employees. First is our library director, Jason Hyatt. Did you come up, Jason? So Jason has worked in public library since 2003, most recently serving as director in York County, South Carolina. He holds a Masters of Library and Information Studies from UNC Greensboro and a Master of Public Administration from UNC Chapel Hill. One of his main professional interests is finding ways to expand the reach of library services to traditionally underserved populations. As a lifelong fan of North Carolina mountains, he is thrilled to now be living and working here in Asheville area. Anything you want to say?
I'm delighted to be here. I know there's a lot going on in our county and a lot going on with our libraries. And I think it's a really exciting time. And I'm, I'm very excited to make Buncombe County my home and my career and hope to be here for many, many years to come. So everyone has been tremendously warm and welcoming.
Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Welcome.
Thank you.
And last meeting, I briefly mentioned Jill, but I did her a disservice. I want to make sure that I give her her bio for the, our community to know. So Jill joined Buncombe County as an open space bond project manager. Prior to joining Buncombe County, Jill worked as a project and operations manager and as an analyst into international public finance. She holds a Masters of Arts in International Economics from John Hopkins University and a BA in Government and International Politics from George Mason University. So I wanted to make sure I did it justice for Jill. Anything you want to say?
Thank you, Avril. Also, I wanted to express my excitement to be here. I have lived in Buncombe County for a little over three years now and I'm excited to bring my skills to serving this community. So, thank you all.
All right. Great, Jill. Thank you for being part of the team. All right. Great. Okay, next up, under new business, we have no old business. So we have a couple of budget amendments. The first is a budget amendment for appropriation to capital fund. And John Hudson, our budget director, will explain this item.
Good evening. Per the county's fund balance policy, at the conclusion of the prior year audit, undesignated, unreserved fund balance over twenty percent is transferred to the capital projects fund to pay for capital projects or debt. This transfer is one million, eight hundred, three thousand, sixty-six dollars.
Motion to approve the budget amendment. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the next item is a budget amendment for FY 2023 Safety and Justice Challenge Grant.
The Justice Services has been awarded a two-year grant for the Safety and Justice Challenge from the MacArthur Foundation in the amount of one million, one hundred thousand dollars. This grant will be used to continue to fund two full-time positions, to continue work on improving court processes to alleviate disparities among and reduce the jail pop- population.
Motion to approve the budget amendment and, and congratulations.
I, I second both parts of that. Congrats to you. I think we can do that. I think we're allowed to congratulate people in a motion. All right. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we've got a few board appointments to go over. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee has one appointment. I'll nominate Deborah Olt.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The Board of Equalization and Review?
I nominate Jonathan Hunter.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Okay, we've got the General Obligation Bonds Community Oversight Committee. And they are, there are different positions for different, people with different particular backgrounds or expertise on this. So, hang on one moment. I should have made notes around each of the, yes, I think you, okay. This isn't, this, I have this. What, what I'm looking for is the different, oh, where is this? Ah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Sorry, didn't see it on the, didn't see it there. Okay, great. Okay, so for the accounting position, we have just one applicant. And Terry, feel free to jump into this if I'm misstating any of this. The, for accounting, we have, okay, right, thank you, Patricia Rosenberg and William Scarborough. So why don't we just, we'll start everyone, Commissioner Edward's side. We'll go down and everyone just identify which, those two for the accounting position you prefer.
Patricia Rosenberg.
Patricia Rosenberg. Rosenberg.
Patricia Rosenberg.
Patricia Rosenberg.
Patricia Rosenberg.
Okay. Great. All right. For the affordable housing position, Joel Henderson has applied. Is there a motion to appoint Joel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, for the banking position, Stephanie Lee has applied.
Motion to approve Stephanie Lee for the banking position.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And then for the conservation, a greenways position, Allison Glacken has applied. Sharon Tabor also applied. Did she fit one of, any of the categories?
She applied for Land of Sky. We just interviewed her during that section.
You just interviewed her in that section. Thank you. Okay. Sorry for getting my wires crossed on that. She's not an applicant for this board. Okay, so we just have Allison Glacken.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Sorry, aye. Any opposed? All right. Sorry, I'm totally disorganized here. All right, the, for the Land of Sky Regional Council appointments. Again, I'll just start everyone on the man's side. If we just go down and identify the applicant you prefer.
Sure. They were all really good applicants. Let me first say that, that we had a great pool of candidates today. My selection's Justin Tyler.
Justin Tyler as well.
Justin Tyler.
Justin Tyler.
Justin Tyler.
Say Jen Hampton.
Great. All right. All right, Commissioners, we do, oh, let me, I've got a couple of announcements. March 7th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. March 7th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session. Mr. Free, will you explain the purpose?
We have three items under General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, in order to discuss matters with attorneys retained or employed by the county. And also under subsection A5, to discuss the price and other material terms of a possible real estate acquisition. We're looking for direction from the board and won't need to come back into open session.
Is there a motion to go into closed session? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session and as was stated, we don't anticipate taking any action once we adjourn back from the closed session.